Good to have, good to have two people.
Yep.
Flexible. So you have the kids home for the summer?
No, I'm an empty master.
Well, yeah, you mentioned that something about your son is with you for a while.
Inspiration to get that up.
He fell in love and.
Oh, okay.
It's good. Now I can get my game on.
Yeah. Wow, that'd be weird when my kids get to that age. I'll have seven kids in the house for, come next week.
Seven?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
What's the difference?
Well, with mine, and then I've got a, I'm gonna go to a county association seminar there in Orlando next week, and I'll be bringing four kids back up with me who are my kids' friends from back when we lived down there, so we'll have a household. Bring it on.
Yeah.
The kids are like dogs, though. The more you have, the more they entertain each other. It's actually easier when there's more.
Right. Yeah, even though he, my son is twenty-four. It was like, you know, stuff felt like, had to keep him entertained.
Yeah.
I'm like, crazy. Fell into the water, head over heels.
Oh, yeah.
Dad, I'm moving out.
All eyes. Aww.
Are we waiting to get back here yet?
And you can't, I think he's wrapped up with it, but, I mean, I'm gonna be doing it, so if you wanna go ahead and start, you can. I don't think he would mind.
Let's go ahead and say the pledge and have an indication. Danny, you wanna pray for a second?
I'll be right.
My pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings. We thank you for each one who's here, and we ask now, as we conduct this business, Lord, that we do it in your will and in the best interest of our citizens, bless these same in Jesus' name.
Amen.
We'll open the meeting. Kristin?
I'm so happy you all came. Then we're gonna do the book editor.
It was too hot to work outside, so it's much easier to do it.
Yeah, it should be done fairly quickly. There's only, does everybody still have this kinda cheat sheet that I handed out last?
No.
Okay. Um, I might wanna, yeah, let's see, I'm gonna wanna be, um, yeah, I'll have one, but I'll go ahead and, um, there's, we have chapter one and chapter three of the code tonight. We'll get started with chapter one, and we kind of have a combination here. We combined a lot of other sections in chapter one, but it looks like there's a lot of addition, but really it's a lot of moving from other chapters, because we moved, um, chapters six, seven, eight, no, seven, eight, ten, and eleven to chapter one. So combined quite a bit. Overall, the land development code is shrinking quite a bit, and it cuts down on the cost of, the things in different places. But this chapter one is really the administrative section or the general section, and it's, so we have in here our development review process, the major minor, all of that. We have our discussion about boards, you know, about the planning, I think Heather's got some amendments to, how they're gonna be, have this report discussion board, just to make sure we're all neutralized, with the part of the digital emergency hearings and that kinda stuff. And then we have, um, our vested rights is a new thing that was added here, clarify those, vary proceedings, and, uh, how it's forming, not defining these sections. So that's all in chapter one now. The subsequent changes I mentioned here on the sheet, and there's really two that I think we need to talk about, and we need to get a decision from you on whether or not you approve of those changes. And the first one being, I didn't actually add these changes yet, but I will if you agree, but one of them is the one that you got a letter on, and we, I talked about this last time, yeah, it's on the board, so we're pretty intent to scale up, I think, about fifteen posts, and we've been talking about it a little bit. Right now, in the land development code, neighborhood infill, it doesn't matter if you're building two houses, in neighborhood infill, it taxes to be reviewed as a major development. So, um, this gentleman here ahead has had a few problems that, um, it's, it's probably problematic just in general, so, and I'm gonna go through that, um, it also is what we have that compatibility analysis, and you got to know that probably, um, in, in all of the years that we've had compatibility analysis, that really doesn't result in much else besides that you're ensuring that whatever's built is kind of exactly like whatever is around, or, and the density issue really doesn't get affected, because they can make those kinda work out. I mean, they're just, they're really not, uh, they're subjective and not kind of the greatest way to do that. So, the proposal here is to treat neighborhood infill like our other developments. So if it's a major, it's reviewed as a major, if it's less than the major threshold, it's reviewed as a minor, those same thresholds. Those thresholds are not changed in here in any way for all developments. They, they are the same, there's no change. But to treat neighborhood infill, and there's a couple reasons why we're thinking about this. A is that I think the original intent, intent for neighborhood infill is to have infill residential development, and then that could be a variety of housing types, and maybe we just need some hard standards for compatibility instead of the subjective compatibility analysis. You know, you just say, this, this new development needs to be a similar lot size to the surrounding development, or needs to have certain aesthetic considerations to the building design that make it work. Just flat out hard standards instead of it being sort of a subjective determination by that compatibility analysis, and then also for those to come through the normal development review process.
Why do you think, I mean, what was the reason for doing it differently, other than that, last time?
Maybe fear related to the variable density, because it, it allows from four to eight units per acre. Um, you, the ones I've seen come in, you know, somewhere between there generally, so maybe they were concerned, but, you know, if you still had, even if you went to the current, you know, if you had a big development, let's say they wanted to do some dense apartment or something, that would still go through the major process. So we're really only talking about the smaller developments in neighborhood infill, and from a planning perspective, it's, it's kind of okay to allow people to do a variety of housing types, to do true residential infill, to kinda have that missing middle housing. Um, there, it's not really great to penalize that through a heavy review process, and, you know, last night we talked about it, nobody seemed excited, and we had South Lawn Community Council represented there, and, I mean, I think everybody understands that that whole compatibility analysis process is kind of, man, you know, it really doesn't help as much.
Um, I, I, what's the difference in the cost from a major to a minor?
Yeah, we actually had a couple engineers there last night that were talking about that, and I think we came, that it's around, it can be between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars, not to mention the time. So if you're, like this guy here, he's trying to do a couple of houses, and he's gotta go to their three board meetings, and spend all that extra money, and, I mean, there goes your affordability, you know, I mean, and you're not able to kinda do any kinda different housing. Matt had a good point last night, that it does kinda force you into being in the development pattern.
Will that make somebody go down, you know, in a density to get into a minor development order, I mean, without being assented?
No, they would still, they would follow the same, see, neighborhood infill is like special in.
I mean, I don't know what you're thinking, but if you're on that threshold, I would think.
It would be the same threshold that all of our other developments follow.
Uh, but I think I see why he said, if, if I'm, if I own, say, an acre, just for, and, theoretically, I could, the threshold is ten units, anything?
Is it smaller than?
But, I mean, there's a.
Forty lots, thirty home family units, or five thousand square feet.
What he's saying is that there's, if I, if I do it like eighteen lots, instead of, I could get in as a minor, whereas if I.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I think it's really incentivizing.
Yeah, it's certainly encouraging them to go down.
Yeah, probably so, and encouraging them to do, you know, that missing middle housing type that neighborhood infill was intended for, I think.
I'm saving thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would think that would be the way to go.
I think that, I don't see why it would have, I don't see why neighborhood infill has to be special.
No. So basically, just apply the same rules to neighborhood infill as you do to anything else.
That's right. Yeah.
I think it would incentivize.
Yeah, I think, you know, if someone comes in here, wants to put the back, you say, hey, just go down, you can, you know, you got a better chance of getting it.
You're done faster and cheaper.
That exists, that, that doesn't, that's, that's where the code says, with the exception of neighborhood infill, and it said, all neighborhood infill proposals are major development.
That doesn't make any sense. A change would be good.
Yes.
Do you want a motion to that?
Yes, and, I mean, the other thing we need to say is if we're gonna add those hard standards, because it does have a variable density range, it's from four to eight, so...
And y'all could develop those standards and bring those back, or how would that work? Y'all just develop and put them in there?
Yeah, I mean, I prefer that, but we could bring it back. I mean, they're not gonna be earth-shattering, but they will be something that gives us a little bit of teeth to make sure that nobody puts something in there that's just really not gonna work with the neighborhood.
I think that, I think that's.
Yeah, I might do a motion.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
You don't wanna take any comments, do you?
Let's stop, stop.
Danny, you ain't even saying? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, cheers.
That's really great, I think that's gonna be better. Um, the other thing that's in chapter one here that is a possibility for us to consider, um, I noticed that we kinda have a fast-track process established in the code for affordable housing, and right now, it's defined as affordable housing, and I want to express that there is a difference between affordable housing and workforce housing, a very big difference in terms of the price points of the home and the income of folks that can avail themselves.
Would you behind these claim, I'm glad, because that's a big sticking point, kind of affordable and workforce?
They are defined in the statute, and affordable has different levels. It starts with very low income, it goes to low income, um, I think there's even extremely low, there's different levels, and it's based on the area of median income, so, um, there are certain.
That would be the section eight, uh?
Yes, yes, right, and then workforce housing is defined as a different level of median income, so it is truly defined differently as a different group and a different price point for the units.
And they're, as a.
No, that's usually gonna be above, that, that would be above those, those levels.
The, the height setting in the program is limited to eighty percent of median, which is defined as low income, uh, very low is fifty percent of median, extremely low is thirty-five percent of median. Those three comprise the definition of affordable housing. Um, workforce housing will now go up to a hundred and forty percent of median income for our account.
If you have an affordable housing project, you're required to have a certain number of units in each of those income categories, right?
Typically, or at least be qualified, every tenant's eighty percent or less, or pays, or is qualified on an adjusted income that is less than eighty percent of median.
Back, is it, does workforce, I mean, does affordable require some level of hood, or workforce doesn't, or is?
Well, typically, affordable housing, in order to operate, it's gonna require some kind of subsidy, um, and typically that comes in the form of section eight, a project-based section eight contract, or a section eight voucher that is on the back of the tenant, and if that tenant moves out, then that voucher leaves also. Um, but to make the numbers work, you gotta have some kind of government assistance helping the folks that you're required to rent to be able to pay the rent. That covers the cost of developing property. Typically, um, both the affordable and workforce housing programs these days use having credits to basically write down the cost of the mortgage. Uh, it's not a direct subsidy, it's a subsidy essentially to the development process that allows development to be created for less money than it would be in the free market.
Even workforce is kind of funny, when we did the housing element, I did all the calculations to see what the price of that unit would be, or that rent would be, and the rent for workforce was in the nine hundred range for Walton County. So that's, we don't really, I mean, we, the market really doesn't deliver that too much in South Walton, and we made that change, um, in the housing element to define workforce housing for our bonuses. I don't know if you guys remember, if you recall that, um, so we have a series of density bonuses that are available for affordable housing and now workforce housing as well, to try to open that up a bit. That's one of the changes that we've been working on, but there's a section in here that deals with.
Where's that at right now?
Um, it's section one point fifteen oh nine, well, this is the policy that I'm thinking about changing, uh, one point fifteen oh nine, uh, under, it's under minor development plan on page forty, page forty of your chapter one draft. If you see, uh, number four there, it says, and I have it highlighted, since technical plans for affordable housing may be approved conceptually, conceptually by the board and county commissioners.
So, could you explain, explain that?
Well, I think what it means, and I'm not entirely sure, but I think what it means is that, um, see, minors, minors don't normally go to the board, those are TRC, um...
I think this is forcing those to go to the board.
I do, too.
Which I think is a good idea.
You do?
I do.
Okay, well, if, that's, that's kind of the situation.
It wouldn't come here if it was straight.
It'd go straight to the commissioners.
Right, but it does penalize them, um, you know, this could be changed to, to, or we could delete it, because we've kinda made that shift to workforce housing, uh, but generally, there's another section in the, in the code that talks about fast-tracking affordable or workforce housing projects. So in other words, if not having all that additional review and expense, because it's...
Where they get reviewed at?
Prevented.
In the fast-tracking.
The fast-tracking, um, it's very unclear what was intended, and I think that's what we gotta, we gotta do, is decide, do we wanna leave this, do we want them to go, or we don't want them to go? Do you wanna incentivize that, or do you, do you wanna keep with that level of review, whatever?
I'd like to understand what that process is.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm not be very specific, the reason I'm so interested in that, is what came up in Mossyhead just a month or so ago, where a commissioner was trying to get the county to give county land to, to somebody to build affordable housing, and it's prime land, the heart of Mossyhead, and if that don't have to go to the commissioners, that should improve someplace else, it takes the community completely out of that discussion.
It does.
And I don't want that to happen.
Okay.
And that, that's the problem with these fast-track mechanisms, is most of the time they're fast-tracking around the citizens.
That's it.
Yes.
And in that particular case, there was nobody who lives out there, has any interest in that project going where she wanted it to go, and if they could've avoided that hearing before the VCC, that could've happened.
Yeah.
Without the citizens ever having an opportunity to see it.
Yeah.
And that breeds just contempt.
There was an upset people.
So, that sounds like what I'm hearing, is that you would prefer, I, I gotta fix this language so we know what it means.
I think at least has to be approved by the VCC.
You would prefer maybe that they follow the same development pattern as other developments, and there's no...
I think the fast-tracking should at least go to the VCC.
I'm not even sure there should be a fast-tracking, to be honest with you. I think that process needs to be wide open.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, the way that is supposed to work, affordable housing is considered conditional use in context of this affordable housing language that was put in there in two thousand eight, I believe, seven or eight. Um, the intent was to take the project straight to the board and county commissioners conceptually, and if they agreed with the location and the general parameters of that, the kinds of things that you would consider in a conceptual approval, uh, they would approve that, and then they would go back through the process as a minor development, without regard to the size of the property. If they reviewed a hundred units, if you go to the VCC first, they agree to the location and the general context, and those details will typically be in conceptual, and then they would authorize that project to fast-track back as a minor development, that would just go to the tech review committee, meet the requirements, and then go to development. They would have to start at the VCC first for the authorization, which is where they could decide, is this the right spot for that? Is this the right developer for this? Is this the right approach for buying affordable housing in this neighborhood?
I mean, I'm just, oh, this is, it seems to me that that was put in in seven or eight, that's ten years, and we really haven't, I mean, everybody agrees that we need affordable workforce housing, but we really haven't developed any in the last ten years, so the, the provision, the fast-track around, basically around the community, hasn't really helped us, so why not just let it do up the rest of it?
I agree.
We can.
Well, we have a housing assistance plan that's been adopted by the board and county commissioners that provides for expedited permitting, one of the strategies to deliver affordable housing. VCC approves this plan every three years, and they have for the last fifteen, um, and expedited permitting is one of those things that the state strongly encourages for delivery of, of affordable housing, uh, so it can certainly get to the market in time for the folks that actually need to live there.
Like, I understand that, but I think the concern is that if there's a process in place that takes the community out of the process.
And that would not take the community out of the process.
I would, I would like to, I'd like to see a requirement that a community hearing be held, and just, and the community have.
There is a requirement, I mean, it has to go to the board for that conceptual improvement, and approved, I mean, we just leave it like it is, because there is that requirement that it goes to the board, it doesn't come to you, but it goes to the board.
I don't care or not, but I think the community has to have the opportunity to.
After, after the conceptual hearing, then there will be a community input?
Uh, no, not one of the board and county commissioners, I mean, there would be a public hearing at that.
So I agree with Ken.
I think it should go to the community.
As a, as a, in, in the real world, um, those things, if they go to the board, it may not get out in public.
Right.
And, especially in, out of the way places like Gaskin, where we have to pump our news in, so, which, there's no, there's no sewer in Gaskin, so we're not having a subdivision, but the...
You know, all sewer in Mossyhead, we almost did, so.
I mean, you got a point there, but it really hasn't helped, I mean.
Well, one of the reasons it hasn't helped is the economy tank, and all of a sudden, a whole bunch of housing became affordable, because they wanted people to rent or buy, um, and that provided the opportunity, certainly in South County, for large developers to come in and buy subdivisions that were finished or almost finished, no houses built, they bought those for pennies on the dollar, and then put a product on there that what, didn't cost as much as the product they would've loved, otherwise had to build there, because of the money.
Uh, to.
So, the economy tanking has sort of taken the air out of the need for affordable housing, but now the economy's back, um, we gotta figure out where the people that serve tables and, you know, cut the grass and, um...
I don't think, you know, that's free for it, but I...
I, I just don't want to do anything that would hinder the public's opportunity to be involved in that process.
And I certainly concur with that.
The, uh...
Just for clarification, though, that one hearing at the board and county commissioner would require notice to be within three hundred feet of the post site, just like it, being measured.
You know how many people that would be in Mossyhead on that particular site that she was proposing?
I don't know.
Zero, maybe three or four?
Given the location, where it is, we got a clock phone on one side, we got a fire station on the other side, a park, and the school, so we're probably right.
Zero.
Leave me notified or shown effectively.
So, I mean, and that's, that's the concern, that's my concern, because...
I don't, I don't think any of us want to, to put something that the citizens don't want.
Exactly. I mean, I think the citizens have to have input, and a site like that, zero citizens are gonna be notified.
So how do you make it? Can you make it where you, you have to have a notice for a community?
That's...
Mean, can you, can you put that in there somewhere where they would have to be, have to be notified for a community?
If they went through the regular.
Outside of three hundred foot, I don't know.
Regular development process, I mean, it would, it would be the regular, I mean, we're, we're taking steps to get our developments online, and to have like a email list where people can sign up and get notices, in addition to the notice, I mean, that's about all you can do. One thing that I do know is that, and Heather may have information on this, is that if the age is part of the Fair Housing Act, and so denial of affordable housing projects that are within the code and comprehensive plan has come a challenge in different local governments. I've heard, I've been briefed on this quite a bit at different trainings, that if it meets the requirements of the code, the cop plan, and the board, and we deny it based on public concern, that we can't get, uh, Fair Housing Act.
You can be sued just for turning the wrong way.
Right, yeah, it's just something to be aware of.
I understand, but I'm saying, I just, I think it's critical, we do everything we can to inform the public, and give them the opportunity to have input in the process. That's, that's, and I think, if, and since that site is what we're talking about, and the way that site sits, I mean, the three hundred feet, no one gets notified. I think that you have to have something to ensure that those people that are going to be affected by it do get notified.
Well, we're in a standard public hearing sign, it's verified. Well, we have a standard public hearing sign, it survives the laws in addition, but I understand your point.
Is there some way you could require some sort of community meeting?
That's what I'm saying.
If there's, if there's no, if there's no three hundred feet, you could say we're going to have a community meeting before we go. I just thought, I don't know, that makes, I may not be practical.
Yeah, I mean, we just, I think that we're tasked with cleaning up and making sure that it makes sense and that we know what we're doing. And there is a fast-track section. It sounds like we should probably want to tailor that to building permitting, not the development review process. And we want to have them go through the regular public hearing process, just like any other development. That sounds like what I'm hearing.
That's what I would prefer.
I thought you really just want to make sure the community.
I think, but that's the only way they're going to do it. I mean, I don't know, and I don't know, in that process, they would do.
Yeah, but if they go through the process like that, their only notification is still three hundred feet.
Yes, sir.
So, you're not.
Is there a way to expand that for that type of development?
I don't know what we could say, of course, with making it harder to develop affordable housing and extend an housing department.
I don't think it necessarily makes it harder. I think you just, the community that's going to be affected has to be notified.
They're proposing a more stringent public notice requirement on affordable housing than a standard apartment complex or subdivision. I don't think would stand legal test.
Can you, can you have a public meeting like that is still fast-tracked after that?
Well, certainly with that, I mean, a public meeting is not an unreasonable idea at all.
If you're trying to.
That's what I want. I want to make sure the public has the opportunity to view and to see and to have input. So, that to me is critical.
You're doing a fast-track process here, just require that they have a public meeting.
Well, and just to give you a little bit of background on the development of affordable housing, these things take years to put together. If you're going to layer various sources of financing, if you're going to use housing credits, the housing credit process usually by a three-year process to get from the end, beginning to the end. And then you get to go to the local government and make your application to actually build it. But that is part of the thinking behind having the expedited permitting, where you come and get at least a preliminary approval from the Board of County Commissioners, the ultimate approval authority. And then you go back and push your project financing together. So, when you've got that together, you can come back through the pipeline on an expedited permitting basis and get your project out of the ground.
Right. I think in the real, the real world, and we're talking about specifically here, in the real world, the goal is to have affordable housing, workforce housing. We all know that we don't get businesses to come unless I have them. So, but in the case, in that specific case, had we had some sort of community meeting first, we would have known that wasn't the fly with that community. So, we wouldn't have been wasting time and resources that could be spent somewhere else.
I.
And we're a bit of a contentious board here, isn't it?
Quite honestly, Commissioner, after developing affordable housing for twenty-five years, I've never been to a community meeting where they embraced the, bringing affordable housing to town. I can tell you what the outcome of that community meeting will be. Everybody will become informed, but you won't have, maybe a couple of people in his pub with the landlord. I've been to meetings where the landlord stood up and supported the project as he was going to sell to the developer that I was representing. And no one else in that room was interested. Because number one, with affordable housing, everybody thinks the worst. That term has as well a negative connotation.
There's reasons for it.
And there are reasons for that, just like the original word, hut grounds called low-rent housing. You know, and then that became a piece of jargon that had a very negative connotation and was used, you know, in what would have been social media back in those days, before social media. It was not on Facebook, it's something negative in today's context.
But now workforce housing doesn't share those to an extent. Because you're talking about a firefighter, teacher, police officer, those houses, those homes.
Not subsidized.
Yeah, but when you get, when you share something with you, how much does a teacher make when they come to work for long time?
Thirty-six.
About what?
Less than thirty-five thousand dollars. That costs five, if you're trying to support a family on thirty-five thousand dollars, you're absolutely qualified for a motion act.
That's it.
So, I mean, our teachers qualify for government assistance to help them pay their rent because of how little we pay that one. Our firefighter started out the same range. Police officer, sheriff's department, get me. And if they're the only house, the only way to earn a household, they qualify for a certain name, deep subsidy on day one, you know? That's the starting reality of this. It's not just workforce housing. They qualify for affordable housing. And that's, and that's the question of our problem. We need places for those folks to live. I certainly agree with you that, I mean, affordable housing over the years has, when most people think of that, you think of the concrete block building that's got twelve to twenty unit senate, it's two-story, it's got a clothesline on back and people standing on the corners, sitting on the crack.
Yep.
That's the perception of affordable housing and years ago.
People don't build that now.
And when the government's there, that's typically what you've got.
That's right.
I was, I was in Savannah this weekend. We went through and found, not looking, they were looking for a place to eat, but we ran into one and it looked pretty nice. But it, it had a sign out front, that's all we could identify.
Go back down there about midnight.
That's true.
Man, the Arvus Shoemaker in Phoenix Springs, that's an example of what we want. That's where it's currently, it has affordable housing units inside it, but you can't go in there and find them unless you know where they are or you have a list. And if you don't know what that apartment complex is, you think it's a standard market rate apartment complex. It's controlled access, it's got a lot of fence all the way around it. It's got a swimming pool. It looks and acts like market rate housing. That's when affordable housing is successful. That's the model we want, not the. Now, you started to be responsible for the Algarve in Phoenix Springs years ago along with about ten thousand other apartments. But that's what we want, not the old style of housing.
You were, you were probably on part of when the Arvus came and that was called, if I remember correctly.
The Arvus was absolutely fall tooth and nail. People did not want that there and then look what we got. I knew it was coming and I knew what the opposition would think and I knew what people would say. And what happened to me about Mossy Head, that's absolutely what I expected to hear. Because that is what you do here. Everybody thinks the worst and nobody wants it next to them.
Well, and it makes sense in different areas, or some areas that don't make sense. In Mossy Head, ain't no job for people to go to.
I agree that that.
No grocery store, no drug store, no nothing.
And it needs to be near services.
That's right.
It absolutely does. It needs to be in an urban area or suburban area.
About thirty miles from the job.
It can't be out away from the necessary services because if people don't have cars, they need to be able to walk or.
I think we're on that Kirsten meeting here, so.
I'm getting to this policy of your section. It is, to me, difficult to know if something's consistent with the code and the comprehensive plan at a conceptual level. So, you know, the board making an approval decision at a conceptual level like that, you know, on affordable housing, which is fraught with, you know, all kinds of issues. It probably, you know, go through the regular process or totally fast-track it, one or the other. Depending on, you know, and I think naturally, it's come a long way. A lot of times, you can integrate affordable or workforce housing or even affordable housing into larger developments and you wouldn't even know it's based on housing typology. Maybe you have a.
And that's a part of the way to do it.
That is, absolutely. And we have a lot of density bonuses that are geared at doing that. And I could see people using those in the mid-county. That probably hasn't worked out financially in South Walton, but it could work out there. So, there's that. And I think that's one goal of the three thirty-one project that we've been working on. It has been expressed to me is to create that, at least have a mix of housing types that people could afford, have those integrated into other housing. And, but we can do two things. We can say they follow the regular approval process or we can leave this like it is. If they come conceptually to the board and they're a minor, because that's what this means, and then make the fast-track section jive with whatever decision we make.
I would prefer seeing it as a regular process. It's not going to happen quick to get away you do it because of all the work it goes into. That's my thing.
I mean, the other thing that could be done, if we wanted to still have a public notice, but we wanted to incentivize that instead of the density growth most approach, you can exempt them from the fees. That's the other option. These are things we're going to have to look at, I think, on three thirty-one plan. We're going to have to look at.
Are you talking about developers who are going to be building a project, they're going to make money? It's not like, they're not giving these things away. I mean, why, why do you exempt them from fees? I'm curious.
People think they're fine with non-profit these days and the Board of County Commissioners has given us a policy that says if they are bona fide nonprofit and they have requests of waiver on their letterhead, then we're authorized to waive the fee.
I can, that I understand.
I would rather waive the fees for affordable housing than fast-track. I think waiving the fees is appropriate.
Let's say you had a big mixed-use development come in on three thirty-one and they had a regular component, but they also had an affordable component. You can waive, you can incentivize them doing that by saying for that affordable or workforce component, you don't have to pay your maintenance fees.
I think that figures it out there in the same.
I think everybody's talking about doing that, so I'm trying to figure out what are the ways that you could really make that happen? Because our current density bonus thing really hasn't been working. Nobody's used it. It's basically not working. Yeah. And nobody really wants much density anyway, so that may be.
We could, we could try the fee approach and see if that would incentivize some more workforce now. I mean, that would, it's worth a try. They watch and do what we're doing in Florida.
Typically, these days, just for information, affordable housing developers make most of their money operating in apartment complexes once it's built. They're building it for a, maybe revenue stream and some amount of credit, tax credits at the beginning. But affordable housing developers hope to at least break even on the development and then make some money on the back end operating the apartment complex. I mean, it's not, and it's hard, as we've discussed, to be approved.
So, giving them a break on fees would help them break even off the front end of the business.
Well, yeah, I mean, some of our fees down here for projects can be in the two hundred thousand dollar range.
The strings that come attached with the state housing incentive program and the shit funds that we get every year out of dock stamps, we would have gotten, I mean, I remember in our catching for counting our size, about three hundred fifty thousand dollar per year. We would have gotten more than a million dollars this year as legislaturemen swept all the money out of the housing fund.
It's amazing how they do that.
And we spend every dollar of that every year. West Florida Land Council is our implementing contractor. And those dollars are, they're very competitive because we got more a year waiting to us for each of those strategies. But the money does fit the produce.
Do you have a motion on this question?
Yes, and I think the direction that I have is to subject them to the normal development review process, consider using fees as an incentive and make sure that the fast-track permit, fast-track process is codified towards the building permit stage, not the development review stage where the public notices, exactly.
I like that motion. What's your opinion?
Any other second? Okay, any motion second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, great. Okay, the last thing on chapter one is to talk about land clearing permit. Currently, and I've actually talked to the board about this under the chapter four discussion. And currently, our land development code really doesn't talk about land clearing permits at all, except for if you're in a coastal new land protection zone. So, we need to either not issue those permits or codify that permit process because we're kind of doing the permitting without the authority. So, we added a section in here dealing with land clearing permits, and this is important because the South Walton land clearing permit requirement is that you had a building permit or a development order in play. So, in other words, you cannot get a presumptive clearing permit or a, like a permit for purposes of selling land or anything like that. You have to actually have a development plan to get that permit. And there are many reasons for that, mainly dealing with the preservation that we have down here and the coastal new land protection zone and all of the things that people get in trouble with down here without a formal development plan are a little bit different than the rest of the county. So, but for the north part of the county, you could do the presumptive clearing. It's a twenty-five dollar permit and we would just notify you during that permit stage of things like, you know, the buffering requirements, we need to clear it out and have to put it back or any environmental considerations.
So, right now, if I want to go out there and clear, five or ten acres, put a field in, I got to get a permit?
That's currently what we do. We do issue those permits right now. Yeah, it's just not in code. We do issue those permits.
What if someone does a lot of permits? What do you do?
Usually we require we get a retroactive, it's a twenty-five dollar, it's not a big deal, it's not a big time constraint and really it just lets them know, most of the time what happens is they may clear their agriculture buffer, which is expensive, they're going to have to put it back in, but they didn't know about it. So, the permit process at least lets them know about it. So, it's proactive in that way. And most people ask us for those permits because they don't want to get in that situation where they've taken something out that.
What's the agricultural buffer?
There is a section in our comp plan that requires you to have a buffer near an agricultural, a codified farming operation. And honestly, I'm not sure that that's valid anymore because there is a state statute that pretty much exempts all agriculture from our land development code. And we don't even permit really in ag.
So.
Which is majority law of the county.
So, if I wanted to go out and clear ten acres, put a, put a pasture in, I don't have to have a permit because that's.
That's correct. You do not have to, in ag or, the language exempts ag as general agriculture, so you don't have to have a permit.
And tree farming and things like that are.
Exempt, right, right. But if you're like in rural village or something like that, you would have to get a permit.
A lot of permit.
Yeah. And usually they do them with their building permit. It's a one-time deal, you know, it didn't let them know about, you know, clearing parameters.
I know it's good like that. And we need to have it in the code if we want to do it.
I think so. Yeah. I don't really see it being a huge change from what's going on. It's just going to be in the code. Except for Shawnee, that is a huge change. They would have to have a, that's a huge change. I don't want to downplay that. That's a huge change.
So, the bay is dividing line.
That's right. And that really is a response to the code enforcement issues that we have constantly down here. Because if someone clears down here, where code enforcement is called. And nine times out of ten, they've taken out something that, you know, if they take out a preservation area, you know.
But you can be brutal about it.
You can't really...
You can't put it back because you can't put back what they took out.
Exactly.
Man, make sure we're here for that to grow.
So was there an acreage requirement on the land clearing for a permit, or no?
No.
To any property? So if you've got a half acre, then you want to clear it off, and there's no agricultural concerns around it, you still got to get a twenty-five dollar permit? For what consideration if there's no agricultural considerations?
Well, if you're ag, you don't have to get a permit.
Yeah, but if you're not...
It's only if you're residential or...
Clearly, it's considered an amendment to construction in land development code today. At least you're about to build something because you're clearing in preparation for it and all that required a permit of some kind. You can't get a clearing permit in advance of getting your development order or your construction permit in those locations. In South Walton, they're eating us up. I mean, real estate brokers are going out and clearing land and speculations, so to make it more saleable.
Sure.
In the meantime, we've got a destabilization of that particular site. We've got erosion runoff. A portion of the natural stormer system vegetation is gone, so more water runs off than otherwise wouldn't have.
So you're changing with end all of that?
We're effectively already doing that. We're just codifying.
You just gotta find the permanent process.
Right. But if it's done in code, that's a, that's a problem.
Well, it's, we're clarifying in code now. It has always been there. When I first started back in the last decade, that was the policy. You didn't get a fairing permit without a development order or a legal permit. Once you got voted, then you can go to the environmental department and get your clearing permit.
But north of the bay, that doesn't apply.
Yeah.
It doesn't apply here.
Actually, it has applied, but it hasn't actually applied as much north of the bay, as south of the bay. What we're trying to do is get someone to leave in the three tiers, north of the bay, and have the most stringent regulations in South County where we have our most environment-sensitive land and where we have regulations in place to protect certain vegetated communities.
That's right.
And, and the only, the only loophole is the ag, which none of the Southland is...
There's no, there's a, a small amount in the Bay Walmsley Plan, but that's...
And that's actually the most of the international...
There's no ag. That's all up there. And the coastal, we do intend to add language dealing with restoration plans, like when someone clears the coastal new land buffer, because right now, we have no guidance in code on restoration plans or anything. So staff needs, I mean, we need to know what to do and apply consistent the other time instead of just being, you know, kind of, we don't even know what to, we don't even have the code to tell them what to put back in there.
How much is the permit cost in South Walton?
Twenty-five dollars.
I think we should have, I agree with you.
So, do you need a motion for that?
That's in here. So if you go ahead and adopt and move the language here, that is in here. The other things were not in here, because I really didn't know what to do with that. So that, that's really it. Those are the serious things in here in chapter one. So, everything else is kind of clean up. You know, we've made references on any set of land use. We made some changes. Again, I think Heather may have some additional legal changes to the public hearing, quasi judicial legislative, that's changing with lawsuits and stuff, so we're trying to keep up. I have some changes. Okay. And that's probably to those sections and to the board section, just, yeah, it's, I don't think it's going to be anything substantive that's keeping the process or too more technical language. Yeah, okay. So if you're okay with that, we'll take our language and move it to the board. So that's it on chapter one. If you want to go, we'll need two motions, one for chapter one and one for chapter three, which is next.
Please go ahead and do one. We have a motion to...
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Melissa, you want to say anything? Thank you.
Did you, I, she said you agreed with the...
Anyways, Bill.
...devicent bill information, and does that mean it's coming backwards to, to report you though? Or you want to direct the language to the board?
Okay.
Okay.
You get it?
Yeah.
I'm certainly glad to hear that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chapter three is super easy, currency. There's really not anything substantive here. It is just cleanup changes. Complete cleanup changes. And we did include all of the level service standards in here, which are at least were, were in various places. We just kind of reorganized. So I don't think there is anything drastic here that requires any discussion. I did add the level service for recreation and open space, and I deleted, there's a section in here that says, based on data analysis, adequate capacity exists for products and rad, but we collect a rec impacting, so we don't want to say that. We put our level service standard in here, so it's just cleanup. No, no major change. We are going to be doing, hopefully, mobility fees, which will necessitate a big change here in the near future, probably. So that will come back substantively.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second question, you have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Is that it?
Thank you for coming back and doing this. I really appreciate it.
You are certainly welcome. Thank you. Here's the answer.